Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for coming in. Looks like we have a packed house. One announcement on the number of people in here. We have enough chairs for the legal occupancy. We have, so if some other people show up, and we got a couple chairs left, we have room in the lobby for roughly about maybe ten or twelve people. That's all we can take in the building. So that's not our council rules, that's the law. So I just wanted to, it doesn't look like it's an issue now, but just want to let you know that that is a little different than normal. But we do appreciate everyone coming in tonight. Our first, oh, roll call, please.
Farmer?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. And the first item on our agenda is the clerk's report.
Okay, you have the council meeting minutes of February 6th, 2025.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that is unanimous. And excuse me, just one second. and know that, you know, the way that we do our visitors' comments is we have you sign in, which it looks like everybody signed in. And if you want to speak, you check yes. If you don't, check no. But I still will go through and read all the names. So even if the people that said no, you know, if you still don't want to speak, that's fine. Just say no. But if you changed your mind, then you can come up to the podium. I want to refresh too, everybody, that when you come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And we, we have a five-minute time limit, okay? So in the interest of, you know, everyone's time, let's try, you know, try to hold it to that, okay? All right. So the first person, Sam Cox. Thank you, sir. Earl Harlemert? Yep.
There it is. Earl Harlemert, 6420 Lavon Court. I'm your parks director. Tomorrow night, we're going to have our line dancing at the Meadowbrook Country Club. Starts at seven o'clock. Liquid Courage will be there until eight. So if you have to have a little liquid courage to be able to get out and line dance, it'll be there till eight o'clock. So you got, you got an hour to partake of that kind of a beverage. Willie Williams from Kruger is going to be our, our emcee. He puts on a great performance. He's going to be out there teaching you how to do it. And he'll be walking right next to you. You never know. It scares the crap out of you. But, but he's a great guy, and we, we have a great attendance. Last time, we had over seventy-five people there. And we have a great, great evening. We're going to have some snacks for people to have snacks. And it'll be over in two hours. We'll be done by nine. Great evening. Have a lot of fun. Bring, bring everybody you want to. We are kind of limited to not having young kids, meaning under, under about eighteen, seventeen, something like that. We like to have older people because it's, it's fun. Get your body, get your heart rhythm up and really have a great time. Then the other thing is March fifteenth, we're going to clean the parks. Every year, the parks ladies and myself get together and we go clean the parks. What we do is we try to pick up the limbs so we don't get the lawnmowers blades all cut up and stuff like that. And we ask for volunteers. But we won't put the list up until after the line dancing's over. If you want to sign up to help us, we'd love to have you. It's a two-hour quick thing. We gather them, put them up on concrete, and the city will come along and pick them up. It saves our lawnmowers, it saves all that money's expense. But the line dancing is what I'm out here promoting today. So please come and have a lot of fun. I mean, we have fun. Thank you. Okay, leave it on. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Doug Jerome? Dana York?
Name and address? Dana York, 10635 Haber Road, Inglewood mailing address, but Clayton, Ohio. So as many of you know, I am part of the Keep It Rule group, one of the, you know, first members of it. What I'd like to say is, we are not against development. We are not against developing this property. Love to see homes there. Love to see people live there, grow their families, everything. Do I necessarily agree with the plan that's, that's been submitted with this zoning change request? No. I don't care for the density. I don't care for the rentals, things like that. But I just wanted to go out there on the record and say that I'm not against development. This is part of the plan. It's zoned residential now. You know, let's, let's build houses there, but let's build the right thing, right? Let's build smart development and develop smart for the city and what the city needs. The other thing is, I'd just like a clear understanding of, of how Roberts rules or city council rule, rules can directly go against the zoning ordinances and the zoning laws that we have. Because it clearly states in a section of the zoning where it says that if you, if council is to vote on a zoning change, which happened last meeting, you have to do certain things like notify people within three hundred feet, things like that. I understand that that happened at the first vote. But I think what most of the people here are upset about is that you voted on a zoning change. And it clearly states in your laws, in the city ordinances, which are laws, that certain things have to happen before that happens. And I, we don't have a time machine. We can't go back in time and just say, hey, we're at, we're in January now, when we're, we were, you know, we were February sixth. So I just, I'd like a clear understanding, and I think the people here would like a clear understanding of how your council rules can, you know, trump your, or, you know, set precedence over your zoning ordinances for the city. Because if that's the case, what, what permits someone from, you know, coming in and doing this and saying, hey, I'm going to sue you in between the first, the first reading and then, and the next meeting, and then we just do this all over again? And it just happens over and over and over again? Like, that's, I think that's the, that's the, that's the concern here of the citizens. So if we could just get a clear understanding of how, how that is possible. And you, I mean, you don't have to answer now, or if you can, sure.
Can I answer now, or wait until after?
Sure, yeah. I think that's what a lot of people want to hear, so.
Yeah. So basically, you started, I believe, indicating that the notice was given the first time. So my interpretation of it, from a legal perspective, was that the motion to reconsider was not trumping that, that we had complied with it and that we were complying with the motion to reconsider and where the council rules were silent on that with Roberts rules. And that was my determination. I understand you don't agree with it, but that was the determination that was made. I thought I did have it on. So that was the determination that I made, for that reason.
Okay, so it's not like we were appointing someone to a board of something where like no precedent or no ordinances apply to that. We were voting on a zoning change, which clearly has set rules that have to be followed, where people have to be notified, a certain amount, and, and things like that. So we voted technically twice on a zoning change. We did it the first time, followed these rules. We did it a second time and didn't have to follow these rules because we went back in time and we were on this date. So I, that's just, I just don't understand. I understand that's your interpretation, so I guess that could be open for...
Disagree on that interpretation. I understand, I'm...
But, okay, so I guess that's the reason why we, like, the reason why we have laws is so that we follow those laws. We can't just, I can't interpret, interpret a law a certain way and, I'm just, what, what stops this from happening again? Just because we get more information from someone, or someone threatens to sue us? What stops this from happening in our city again? Because this, to me, is now an open door to say, hey, put, put your plan in there. If they say no, let's start and sue them, or let's give them a little bit more information to make them feel better, so that we go to the next meeting and when we get approval.
And I know, and I'll let Mr. Farmer talk if he wants to. Mr. Farmer contacted me about a resolution that's on the agenda tonight to modify that motion for reconsideration.
Yep.
So I think that might address your concern. And I think that's what Mr. Farmer was addressing. So if you want to speak to that, Mr. Farmer, that's certainly up to you.
Just really quick. I, well, I was going to address this with council area, so I could now. I, I looked at the rule, and it, in my opinion, was applied legitimately and appropriately. You know, because we went back in time just before that vote. And I looked at it to say, what do we do so this doesn't happen in the future? Because I do think the residents were short-changed on notice. And I actually went through and looked at, well, can we write some additional verbiage in to give, you know, you have to give two days' notice if you're going to be the one bringing the reconsideration. It got to be sort of long and clunky. And ultimately, it was, well, and confirmed with Marie, Martina, that, well, let's just eliminate the ability to reconsider at the next meeting. So if you're going to reconsider, you have to do it in that meeting. When that meeting is over, it's done.
Yeah, and I believe that's how the normal Roberts rules apply, right? But city council can vote to, like, have it the next meeting, right? Is that how it works? That's, right, yeah, yeah.
But, but, but this would eliminate that risk, and I think it does take away some vulnerability of council as well. Like you pointed out, if someone doesn't like the rule, to track down someone that was in the majority to say, hey, how about changing the rule? And that, that, that wouldn't be able to happen with the rule change.
Okay. And then the last thing, the last thing I'd like to say is, I think there was, I mean, I know I talked to Tina before the meeting, but this is a, this is not just to approve the preliminary plan so that we can go back and ask for what we want. We are changing the zoning tonight. So zoning will be changed to PDD, whether you approve their final plan or not. So inevitably, inevitably, if all of you council members go away, and someone comes in and they want to build high-rise apartments in that, in that, I understand, I mean, you don't have to shake your head at me. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm saying if, if all of you are gone, and it's, you know, ten years down the road and council's completely different, they have a different prerogative, they can, they can build whatever city council approves to be put on that land. That's PDD. So I just want to throw that out there. We are changing the zoning. We're not just voting yes on the preliminary plan. The zoning will be changed tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Didi Goodwin?
At the end.
At the end? Gosh, I'm trying to, Buzz Goodwin? Okay, thank you. Catherine Springer? David Neef, or Neff, Neef? Derek Muncy?
Derek Muncy, 6511 Teywood Road. Actually, I want to say thank you for passing this motion to reconsider. Wasn't available on the sixteenth to come down here, but I watched the council meeting on YouTube and was kind of disappointed in a lot of the comments that I heard. First thing to clear it up, because this property is in the overlay district, it has to be a PDD. If you read the zoning code, anything over five acres and more than five lots, has to be a PDD application. Even if it wasn't in the overlay district, you'd still have to have a major site plan that's almost identical to the PDD requirements because of the size of the property and because of the number of lots. Most of you don't know me, but my wife and I moved here about eight years ago, and we got extremely lucky. We found one of the few rentals that was actually available in this community. Unfortunately, that was in Inglewood at the time. Boy, fell in love with the community and decided to move to Clayton. And the only thing we really didn't like was what everybody lovingly refers to as the double tax. You know, we fell in love with the people, fell in love with the schools. And I think what's been most frustrating about the last couple of years, listening to some of the comments about rentals and developments, is that the way I feel is that maybe I wasn't as welcome here as I originally thought. You know, if we weren't able to rent a property to come here, to find something that was affordable to stay, then we definitely wouldn't be here. We stayed because of the value that we got for our money in the school district, and the prospect that maybe Clayton would continue to grow and we could eliminate the double tax. Most of you also probably don't know that in the last three years, my wife and I have flipped the house and sold it, rented a property, and built a property on a vacant parcel that was never productive. I, I know this market intimately, and when I'm not, in all my free time, I practice law in the area of land use and zoning and construction disputes. You know, the, every time a development comes up, we hear the same thing from the community. Somewhere else is better, somewhere else is better. Where? You can look on any map, even old maps, and you can see that this has been a missing tooth on Main Street for a long time, with similar density on both sides of this property. Also, you know, we've heard the term urban sprawl. If you don't want something on Haber, if you don't want something further out, then put it where there's already development. Next, you know, just, I, I, I've heard someone say, you know, we're talking about numbers of the school district. I don't think you're actually doing the math. Being conservative, these, these parcels are going to generate two to three thousand dollars more for the schools each year. That's a million dollars of new funding for Northmont schools. You can check, check my math, please. You know, next, you know, everyone keeps demanding five-acre lots and custom homes on the lots. Ask the developer. Try to get financing for a project like that. If you know a bank that's going to lend for builders like that, let me know, because I couldn't secure financing for my construction on a three-acre lot in this community for a custom home. I think it's just, I'm, I'm sorry, but the polite way to put it is just ignorance on the subject. You know, I've installed, I've excavated this ground myself. I've installed four hundred feet of sewer line. I've installed two hundred feet of water line. And I've built, I've been, I've done this in the last three years. And, and it is costly, and this is how development gets done. There's just no lending available. It's just how the market works these days. You're not going to find five-acre lots and custom homes or people doing that on anything other than just a one-off build, which would still require rezoning and a major site plan. You know, I, I think, you know, I agree with some folks on, maybe we don't want this many houses, but it's what this community needs. You know, I, I would like to see the community continue to grow. Sometimes I question whether staying here was the right decision based on some of the comments that have been made over the last couple of years. You know, we, we fell in love with this community. We want the community to grow. We want more families to be able to come and have that opportunity that we did. We got lucky. So that's most of my comments. But, you know, last, this reconsideration issue, this PDD would never become permanent until after this meeting, after public notice, after public comment. So I, I just think that there's, that it's a veiled concern. You're not mad about the reconsideration. You're mad about the, them passing the rezoning. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Berber Gorman? Thomas Jones? Paulette Farmer? Lauren Kinsler?
Lauren Kinsler, 317 Rankin, in Inglewood. I wrote notes. Third time's a charm, so. Hello, council members. My hope this evening is not to burden you with details that I or others have shared in the past couple of months regarding the change in zoning of the residential use in our backyard. I think a simple and more important reminder needs to be stated. No matter who you are, your line of work, whether you're a salesperson, a construction worker, an elected official, or a resident, people will always remember how you treated them, how you made them feel. Were you honest, upfront, caring? They will never remember how many homes you built, the density, the fiscal state of the city during your tenure because you could be voted out, or how much good you actually accomplished if you continually treat them like their insights and opinions do not matter. At the previous council meeting, it was made known that just Inglewood residents were the ones that had an issue with the reconsideration. While we had no idea or an opportunity to know that it was being reviewed, it was unannounced. Yes, I am an Inglewood resident. I'm also a Northmont resident, who attended school with two council members' children, learned beside two others, and consider one a dear friend. We care about Clayton and sound development just like you. We have different ideas, and that's okay. But this is my plea. Stop speaking to Clayton, Inglewood, and Union residents, and to other council members with such disregard. Learn to have decorum even when you don't agree. Return phone calls in order to have honest discussion. Listen to the people you serve and manage the city in a fair way. Because like people have mentioned, like I mentioned before, they will always remember. Even if you build homes, all of us will remember what you did.
Thank you, ma'am. Shane Kinsler? Dan Foley?
Good evening. I'm Dan, I'm Dan Foley. I live at 111 Copperfield Drive in Clayton, with my wife Kathleen. I'm also a member of the Planning Commission here in Clayton, and I voted to recommend to council to approve this, this housing project, and I just wanted to share some reasons why. First, as a bit of context, along with some folks in this room, I served on the committee in November to help advocate for the passage of the income tax levy. I did that because I understood that it's been, it was like twenty years approximately since the last time that the city had, had new revenue. We needed it, and thankfully, voters agreed with that. And as much as people don't wake up every day and, you know, love the idea of an income tax levy, sometimes you have to invest in yourself as a community, not only to pay your bills and to, and to deliver basic services, but, but also, I think, to attract new investment. And I think this housing project before you, tonight before council, is an opportunity to invest in ourselves. And the fact is, I, I think at this point in history, I think council has to do everything they can to make decisions that helps the city grow. Because the fact is, the city hasn't grown. We, we formed in 1998. The 2000 census showed us a population of about thirteen thousand three hundred and forty, three hundred and fifty, and the 2023 census showed us, showed we're at thirteen thousand, two twenty-two. So we actually lost, we lost residents over that time. And I don't think anybody's saying, including myself, that we have to double in size overnight. But I do think this. I do think that most communities would give, you know, give their right arm, so to speak, for the assets that exist here. We're, we're close to major highways with seventy and seventy-five and State Route forty-eight. We've got land for housing and new jobs, some redevelopment, some new development. We've got a solid existing housing market, although, as Derek said, it's, it's challenging for young people to get into that market. We have a good diversity of people and occupations and demographics. We've got a strong school district. So it should be easier for us to grow than communities who don't have half of that. This Warner Village project, I believe, is a good place to start. And I also think we need to build more. I mean, I, I drive up and down, you know, Main Street, coming home from work every day, and I, there is, there, you know, it's not thirty acres, but there's an acre here, three, five acres there. And I believe that the city advocates for trying to redevelop that, but I just think it's time to really try to look at every possibility that we have. The last thing we need is for Clayton to be perceived as too much trouble, or, or too hard to invest in, or too hard to deal with. This is important because people need places to live. It's a regional problem. It's not just Clayton. We need more housing. Companies need places for their employees to live that's not too far from where they work. I was a former county commissioner in 2011. I flew with some city folks and some county and state folks to Peoria, Illinois, and we, we pitched Caterpillar on that location. And we were competing with five or six different cities, and over the course of a year, we won that, we won that location. And I asked Kevin the other day, I said, how much, you know, what's, what's the income tax benefit to that? And it's about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year that's split between the city and the school district. And the reason I bring this up is because if I'm Caterpillar, or if I'm the next Caterpillar, I want to make sure that my employees can live close enough to that facility that they're not driving a half an hour or forty-five minutes to work every day. So I think more housing leads to other investments like retail and restaurants, which I think we could use more of on the north end of the county. And it also means younger people, new blood in the community, people who may serve on the Planning Commission, may serve on council, may start their own business. So I would, I would just ask council to consider supporting this. I do think that, and my own take, I think council needs to set some targets. I think council needs to set some housing targets and some economic targets, and maybe have done that. Maybe I just don't know what they are. But I think once you, if you can come to an agreement on where we need to be in terms of the number of housing units, hopefully you support this one, and some economic targets, I think you'd have a lot of people in the city that would support a strategy like that. So I encourage you to support this Warner Village development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Orgloria? I don't want to butcher your name again. I'm sorry. Thank you. Mike Stallings?
Mike Stallings, 3470 Sweet Potato Ridge Road. I would like to say for starters that it's the rural nature of this community that makes it so attractive to everybody. You know, you start building, especially developments like what they're talking about, and bringing in more business, and more this and more that. Next thing you know, we're Heber Heights. I love Heber Heights, but I love the fact that it's over there, and I'm over here. I don't want to make Heber Heights here. And I think that a lot of people share that sentiment. So all these people talking about how great this place is, don't forget what makes it so great. What makes this place so welcoming? You know, why does everybody want to live here? Because it's a small rural community. And what we're talking about doing is destroying that. All right, I come up here with a prepared statement. If ordinance number 012502 is approved tonight, a four-member petitioner's committee, which has already been assembled, will provide a letter of referendum to the law officer regarding just passed ordinance. Letter also requests that the final and approved ordinance be attached as required under section 10 dot O2, as it is not yet available under the final vote. The petitioner's committee will seek a repeal of the ordinance and request that the city of Clayton provide an appropriate petition forms, as well as a number of signatures that the city believes are required to validate the referendum. Based upon Clayton City Charter Section 10 dot O2, the number of signatures to be collected will be based upon ten percent of the city's electors in the last governor's election. Since this will be on the ballot for the city, any registered voter on Clayton will be able to sign this referendum petition. The intent of this committee is to provide every opportunity for every city-registered voter. Upon collection of signatures over the next thirty days, the petitioner's committee will file the petition to repeal the ordinance with the Montgomery County Board of Elections, at which time the ordinance will be suspended. The suspension will be resolved by one of four options. Board of Elections will determine the petition is insufficient. Petitioner's committee will withdraw the petition. City, Clayton City Council will repeal the ordinance. Five days lapse to the Board of Elections certifies the results of the official vote on the, on the question. Due to what was preserved, perceived as a lack of transparency at the city council meeting on February 6th, 2025, the petitioner's committee felt... the petitioners committee felt it was the only resource to have the voices of the dozens of citizens heard that spoke in opposition at previous Planning Commission and city council meetings. The committee appreciates the members of this council that were equally troubled by the lack of transparency at the February 6 meeting, when only three residents were in attendance and nothing appeared on the published agenda. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Tammy Blevins, 421 Rankin Drive. Ever since we heard of the development, there has been a dark cloud hanging over our lives. While we should have been celebrating holiday season with family and friends, we were consumed with ongoing stress, uncertainty, and more questions than answers. In response, we came together, neighbors and friends, through group texts, which revealed not only our own personal concerns, but those of those in the entire community. Issues such as ground stability, water runoff management, traffic congestion, overcrowded elementary schools, and strained emergency services. These legitimate concerns enough should have been enough to prevent this development. We asked questions, some went unanswered. Others were met with responses we now know were untrue. We were told that Northmont supported the project only to learn from the superintendent that this was false, promoting him to call the city and demand that you stop the misleading claims. We asked what we could do to stop the development. I was belittled and told I would not be able to do much since I was not an Inglewood resident. We filled your meeting with voices from all three cities. We spoke out, we followed the process. When we heard the no vote, we were all so relieved. We almost couldn't believe it. We thought you had actually heard us and that you were doing your job that the voters entrusted you to do. In hindsight, we should have known better. Because then came the blindsided sucker punch. We thought you, we, sorry. We heard through our group text of a sudden reversal. All over again, the same sickening feeling only worse. How could this happen? Why did this happen? There was no notice, no transparency. The issue wasn't even on the agenda, despite having plenty of time to tell everyone. Sorry, lost my place. The secrecy surrounding this meeting was very concerning. We had to watch it on YouTube and were shocked. You came up with rules and laws to fit your own personal agenda. Legality does not equate to integrity. And this process has been anything but ethical. Words like deceptive, suspicious, underhanded, untrustworthy, dishonest, and unethical should never be words to describe one's city council, city manager, or law director. But here we are. Thankfully, a few council members remain committed to true transparency, and we appreciate that. One troubling development was Ms. Kelly's reversal. After initially voting no, she changed her vote to yes. Why? There was never a clear, understandable reason of why she changed her vote, especially after she had left me a voicemail the day after January meeting thanking me for speaking and confirming the development was, and I quote, "turned down and good for good reason." We even discussed the matter one week before the February meeting, where we agreed on all the things that were brought up with our concerns, even adding that she felt by voting no, she was saving the money and she was saving money to the developer and the city. I asked her if there's any new news on the development. Her answer was no. So what changed within that week? Since the last vote, I have left several messages. None of them have returned. However, her silence speaks volumes. Throughout this entire process, it has had a negative impact, including all of us, all of you, the developers. Imagine how bad it will be for all of us if the reasons not to build become reality. Your citizens deserve a vote to improve their lives, not one that makes their lives worse. Please keep that in mind when voting.
Thank you, ma'am. Lynda Hughes?
Good evening. Kendra Oral, I live at 303 Rankin, and I also own land in Clayton directly behind my property on Rankin. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us this evening. First, I want to address the development. I came to the meeting when we are officially notified because I wanted to make sure that water issues we had and concerns that we had were addressed and on record. They were all valid and important concerns. We have already had a lawyer involved in the past over the water that we were getting from the field. We then paid a lot of money to buy an acre and then fix the problem that was recommended by Montgomery County Soil and Water. We had also proactively met with the development team and felt that after we had our concerns on record, that they would be sure to be addressed. The meeting was full, and there were a lot of people who spoke. Everyone was respectful and listened to by the board. The board voted, and it did not pass. We thought that the next step was for the development to take the plan back to the Planning Committee. We were never aware that this vote could be reconsidered at the next meeting. If it would have passed, I would have been disappointed with zoning the way it is. But honestly, that probably would have been the last you would have heard from me, unless my concerns that I had brought forth had not been addressed by the developer as they had assured us. Now, I have major concerns about whether I can trust certain city council members, the developer, the city manager, that they are being transparent and honest. Revisiting a vote when no community members or neighbors directly affected were present was deceitful, especially since there was communication with the developer. If the vote wanted to be revisited, there's ways that that could have been done with notice to the community members. I am aware that the vote had to be done at the next meeting. You could have canceled that meeting and allowed for notification and put it on the next agenda. I feel now that it's important to get awareness out to the community and allow them to know that this is what can happen. What happened was concerning, unfair, and frankly unethical. I appreciate there were two other board members that spoke up during that meeting to tell the other members it was wrong. Citizens should want transparency in their city council and for their members to stand up for what is right. I ask you to reconsider your vote on this development. Let it go back to the Planning Committee and come up with a better plan that the council can agree on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Kent Speltz? Janet Shreel? Robert Shreel? Karen Schultz?
Bruce Rautson, 101 Dubner Drive, Union, Ohio. My house sits directly across from where this development's going to have their main exit. I'm the first house on the corner. And I think at the last meeting, I had problems with what Sweet Potato Ridge is now, which is a racetrack. I didn't hear a lot of positives about how it's going to be corrected. We have no patrol from Clayton doing that now, which I've asked for. I found, went to Union, went to Inglewood, Clayton, no response. Multiple accidents happened there. You're going to put maybe 500 cars more on Sweet Potato Ridge, which I find incredibly difficult to understand. But I do ask council, and I appreciate the time, who vetted D.R. Horton? Because I did. They put $400 million a year up for litigation for defects, illegal practices, and I have the documentation. You've been sued multiple times, 19.6 million, 14 million. You can smile, but it's on record, it's public record.
Bruce, I'm going to ask you to address the council.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Apologize. So I want to know who voted him. I'm going through the same thing in Union. They also want to develop in Union on hard ground, rock, limestone. Union wants to put up $350,000 to help them out. I find that abhorrent for me to pay for that. I'm just asking council to at least vet them, to know what you're getting into. They have developments all around that aren't finished. They have one in Eaton, Ohio. It's been going on 10 years. They built eight homes out of 30. I don't want to put up with that construction, mud, traffic, and everything else for that long. And this is going to take years. I'm just asking you to look at who's going to be building. I'm not against development. It has, we have to develop. And Union and Clayton and Inglewood has to come together. You guys can fight all you want, but we're all neighbors. Same school, same shopping. Go into Kroger with another 500, 600 people. Try to get into Panera. We're not ready. And I haven't heard any plans to develop shopping districts or markets. But you're already going to put that many homes up there. I'm just asking you to be smart with your development. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. Rose Plummer? Courtney Hart? Joe Cedar? Did I say your name right? Cedar? Cedar? Bill Cedar? Julie Barrow? Jennifer Gonzalez? Gary Turbord? Ellen Hogan? Jeremy Blanford? Scott Grimes?
Good evening. Dennis Lieberman, 7475 Kimmel Road, Clayton, Ohio. I see really three different things that I wanted to address very briefly tonight. The first is the actual development, and I'm going to keep that very brief. I think there's been some good things said about a lot of different things as it relates to the development. And I've had a number of conversations with a number of people. I mean, Danny and I have talked a lot about development and about City of Clayton. I just want to remind everybody here that we have, we're at a crossroads. The, what we did with the income tax is a Band-Aid. It's not going to last forever if we don't grow and if we don't have more people in the City of Clayton to spread the income tax burden with. And it's a little bit like a saying in hockey. It's like in hockey, you don't skate to the puck. You skate to where the puck is going to be. We have to do that in Clayton. We have to think where that puck is going to be 10 years from now and what we can do to make it a better place. The second thing I wanted to address is the reconsideration. And Ryan, I commend you for doing this the way it's supposed to be done, by putting in the legislation with the Clayton Council, not throwing word bombs and accusing people of being dishonest or corrupt or anything like that, but doing it the right way it's supposed to be done and have a conversation about it. I don't agree with you on it. But I commend you for doing it the right way. And the reason I don't agree with you on it is because I think it's bad legislation to change the rules for one instance, for one factual situation. I want you to think about this. What if it would have been different in a different situation where you wanted something and you got it, and there were four people or there were three people that were against it and for it? And you find out later that the reason why you all voted for it turned out to be wrong, that there was really some very devastating things about that issue. You wouldn't be able to reconsider it. And you're not going to find that out the night of the vote because that's just a matter of changing your mind. That's not a reconsideration on additional information, which is what Roberts Rules of Orders of Order does address. That's why I'm opposed to it. That's the only reason. As far as transparency, I mean, look, we've been having this debate in Clayton for years on what is good and what is bad. Some people, I think, are, I think they're entrenched in their positions, but we all know it. And it's not like there wasn't transparency here. There were two or three meetings with the developers themselves. There were meetings with the Planning Commission. People had a say, there was a first vote on it. People were here. Do you think anybody doesn't understand the position? They do. This is, and Kenny, I know you're looking at me, but I got to tell you, man, I'm just disappointed in how you've handled this. You can't, you can't, you cannot.
Sit down, Dennis.
Order, please.
Thank you, everybody.
You cannot.
We do this.
You cannot throw word bombs. You can't accuse your staff and your fellow council members of being dishonest, of being corrupt. And that's what you're doing. And you cannot do that. I'm very disappointed in you because you didn't used to be that way. We used to be able to talk, and we used to be able to talk things out and make it work. And I can tell that you've gotten some of these people irritated. But it's not.
Okay, folks.
Dennis is an attorney, so he knows how to change things.
Hey, listen, we gave everyone else a chance to talk, please.
Yeah, but nobody stood up there and accused someone.
Please.
I didn't accuse him. I said I was disappointed. And I'm going to finish what I'm going to say. I am disappointed because respect.
Time is up, thank you.
Because.
Kenny, relax.
I have not had my full time because people were interrupting me. I'm just going to another couple seconds finishing, okay? Kenny, and since you're the one doing this, you need to learn to respect. Just stop it and respect people, okay? I mean, there was a time when we talked about.
We gave everyone else a chance to speak.
There was a time when we talked about gun legislation. And we talked it out for nine months, and you came and you agreed, and we compromised. And that's the way that this is supposed to happen. That's what a democracy is. So let's stop the hate, okay?
You too. I don't hate anybody, Dennis, thank you.
Hey, folks, listen. Mr. Grimes, Scott. Scott, relax, everyone. We gave everyone a chance to speak. Thank you, sir.
Hi, Aaron Horn, address 4705 Duke Drive in Mason, Ohio. I'm with D.R. Horton. I just wanted to quickly address one of the citizens' comments to the council members here. We have a development here in Clayton, and anybody on the council or citizens are welcome to come see our model. We have a salesperson that's there full-time, and we're proud about the developments we build. So we have nothing to hide. We're a $40 billion company, so that inevitably has a, creates a target on our back for different lawsuits. To my knowledge, there are no lawsuits that we and our Cincinnati division have here. We're proud to stand behind the product we build and the quality we build it with. A lot of the national lawsuits that our company gets tied into are actually failures of subcontractors that we work with. So we work with a lot of local subcontractors. So we go do projects in different communities in the Dayton and Cincinnati area. We're going to be pulling in vendors that are local to Montgomery, Miami, Green County, to build the projects here. So I would just invite anybody to come to our models, to our projects. We're not trying to hide anything. And when you're such a large company, whether it's Apple, Google, you can go on Google and find dozens of. And when you're such a large company, whether it's Apple, Google, you can go on Google and find dozens of lawsuits. I'm not dismissing that. I can't speak for other divisions outside of our own. But if you even go on Google, I think, I just was sitting down here. Winger Village here in Clayton has about 50 Google reviews and it's a five-star rating. So the residents that are there speak very highly of the development. You're more than welcome to speak to anybody who lives in that community. And, and we pride ourselves on getting good survey results from our, when we sell a house. And then we have warranties where we follow up at the one-month mark, six, six-month mark, and then the year mark to ensure that, you know, we stand behind the product that we put in. So I just wanted to, to make a comment that, again, anybody is welcome to come see. And I'm happy to always answer questions, whether it be citizens or from the council on the product we build and the quality that we stand behind. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Matt Gaston? Mark Shrimp? Schnicky, sorry.
I'm just going to talk about the development.
Yeah.
About our process.
It's all right.
Mark Schnicky, 600 West Lovin Avenue. I am the developer of Schnicky Development Group. I kind of wanted to just kind of address you guys and kind of give you an idea of how we arrived at this decision that we made. Sorry about my voice. I just got over bronchitis. It's pretty miserable. When we do a development, we take this very serious. We're not, we're not, we want to, we want to, our, our main focus is to create a partnership with a community, a builder, and us, the developer. And if we can do that successfully, we're going to have a successful development. And what we do in our process, the first thing we do is we look to identify a property. Matt identified this property. First step we do is we go check the zoning. When we looked into this zoning plan, we went through and we also met with the city. And we looked first at the Plan Clayton, Future Plan Use Plan, Comprehensive Plan that was approved by City Council May 2018. Six of the seven council members voted for that. The Property Zoning Code designation of Warner Village was approved by six of the seven City Council members on June 17, 2021. Then there was a Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee. Was formed and recommended for development of the additional residential units in the designed area shown in the Comprehensive Plan. Approved by six of the seven council members on June 5th, July 15, 2021. And this is all kind of backed up with history. Then we actually went all the way back and looked at the previous zoning. This zoning was in place, this, this, this medium-density zoning that's in place with the overlay on top of it has been in place since 1980 in this town. So it's not like we kind of pulled this out of a hat. I mean, we wouldn't, we weren't, we weren't going out and saying, hey, let's go find some rural zoned agriculture land and turn it into a, a mixed-use, a, a medium-density development. That's not what we would do. And that's not, not how we go about our business. The other, then the next step we go to, and that's what made our decision to buy the land. The landowner needed a quick sale. We were able to, to, to do what he needed to do with the confidence that we had the zoning that we needed to do what we wanted to do, need, what we could do. The next step we do is due diligence. Everyone that's a good developer does good due diligence. First thing we do is we, we check wetland delineations. We identified some wetlands. We're going to protect those, those wetlands and, and keep them in the open space and protected. Next, we do soil tests and test borings. We drilled 30 test bores across the whole site. We do know there's rock there. We know where the rock is. We know the depth of the rock. We therefore hired a contractor that has the ability to excavate the rock. We also designed the community to accommodate housing that works really well with this, this, with this geology structure. It's really quite that simple. We also did a stormwater study. And I know Matt, who is on our team, is a civil engineer. And our engineer that we hired met with some of the residents on Rankin and kind of gone over what we would do. And I, I can tell you we are going to work with Montgomery County and we're going to make sure that the detention basins in the, in the stormwater is managed properly. Because quite honestly, that we have to. And we, we don't want to be bad citizens anyway, but even if we didn't want to, we couldn't because that's the way, way it is. We did check sewer and water availability and capacity. That all checked off. We got letters on that effect. We actually did a traffic study, which is something you normally don't do this early on in the game. But we, we always feel it's important to know what we're going to get into. We don't want to be any surprises. It's not our, you know, we're, we're too careful to, to not do that. So we know kind of what we're going to have to do traffic-wise. And we're going to work with the county. We're actually going to work with your traffic people and our traffic people and create whatever we need to do to, to make that traffic work along Sweet Potato Ridge. I kind of jumped over some of this. We, we also identified the fact that there's really is a market here. I don't, I probably don't need to explain to you guys that Clayton is pretty awesome. I've, I've been here for, I don't know, nine months looking at it. And I'm like, wow, this is really something special. And I think, and we know this because we look at our market study. Oh, man.
Sorry.
That's fair. All right. But I'll be around for questions if you have any later. Man, I talked way too slow. Sorry about that.
All right. Thank you, sir. I think if, I think if there's. Anna Ernst?
Good evening. My name is Anna Ernst. My address is 455 Main Street. And yes, the house that my husband and I own is in Clayton. It is the original manor house that was attached to this property that we are discussing about developing. I'm not here to worry about the merits of the builder or the merits of the design. I see why the builder likes this lot. I understand the design. I have a degree in design. I understand. What I'm trying to do is something my mom would advise us to do when we were stressed out. She would say, kiss. Keep it simple, stupid. Now, I'll be nice and say, let's keep it super simple here. No one is speaking against growth for Clayton. Every city has to grow. The issue is this particular location. The issue is the massive number of units being proposed. And in my estimate, the lack of factual evidence that Clayton is ready for this or in need in this number of housing. One issue I do have is that the builder or the developer seem to focus on Fisher Homes building these houses. They're only building a small number of the very expensive, pretty houses close to the road. The D.R. Horton Group will be taking care of the bulk of the duplexes and the rentals. And that simply did not come out. That's what I heard. Well, you can, you can rebut later, I suppose, but this is what I heard at the last meeting that I was invited to. So let's just keep it, keep it simple here. I'm not going to go there. What I'm saying is that Clayton, Inglewood, Union, maybe three separate cities, but they function as one community. Inglewood and Union residents, especially those that are being directly affected by this development, should have their concerns given equal consideration. And I watched the YouTube of the February 6 meeting. And someone dismissed, the Inglewood residents, they don't matter. That's really short-sighted. It's a community. Our community has expressed a long list of legitimate concerns on multiple occasions without real answers. We feel like we're not being fully heard. A council member's job is to represent the interests and concerns of the community they serve. This is an elected position. This is not a position of authority. Your decisions need to be based on fact and what the community wants and needs, not what you feel personally. As for my feeling about the developer, Mr. Schnicky, has many years of experience, decades of experience. His father ran the company before him. He's taken a calculated risk. He knows that. One of the things that he should have been aware of is just a few months prior to purchasing this land, there was a similar, smaller project that I have just become aware of as a new resident to the area. This project on Haber was overwhelmingly voted against. 77% of the Clayton residents said they did not want it. Why would this development be perceived any differently? If I were a developer, I would know that and think, hmm, do I really want to do this? Do I want to invest that many millions of dollars to maybe have this not happen? I've heard the word lawsuit when I was watching the YouTube. I really hope that that's somebody just puffing, as Judge Judy would say. Because this is all preliminary, which I also heard on the YouTube. At worst, threatening of a lawsuit to me is an intimidation tactic. It is not perceived well by most people. So tonight, council, when you vote on this, if you vote to move this forward, please be aware, you're wasting everyone's time. You're wasting the developer's money. And in light of the fate of the Harbor project, you could be opening the door to a lawsuit, a legitimately-based lawsuit. So I don't want that to happen. I don't think anyone else wants that to happen. So please be aware of what Mike has read. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'm going to circle back to DeeDee Goodwin. Change your mind? All right. Come on up.
Hi. DeeDee Goodwin, 418 Beach Grove Drive. And I chose to go last just so I could listen to the others. And I've been coming to the meetings, obviously. I am in Inglewood, but I'm only 300 feet away. So Inglewood matters. You start messing with the ground, you probably start messing with my house. I built early 2000s. First year, I went through 12 sump pumps. Paid a lot of money to divert the water. I'm not far from the development. Not looking to have it back. I've done a lot of work. These people put you here. And I know that was just said, but God love you all for, for serving. But you're elected. And they have elected you to be their voice and have their backs. Because that's how things happen. You speak for them. Gut feelings, personal issues, they've got to be off the table. I keep coming and I keep seeing some of the same people and hearing the same things. They've brought actual facts to you. They've educated you. If you don't know the property, and I'm just talking about the specific property, you have an expert. Mr. Gorman knows it very well. He's been a developer for how long? He knows the lands. He knows what's going on. One thing I've never heard is the word compromise. Y'all have never stepped up and said, you know what, maybe we could do a development, but it's got to change. The way it's drawn, that's what nobody wants. But y'all aren't hearing it. And I don't understand why. Y'all are sitting in the same meeting I am, and I'm listening to these people talk. They keep saying the same thing. But nobody comes up with anything. And it's like 540 homes to start with. And they said, well, you know, at the zoning meeting, is that stuck in, in, in stone? And they said, yeah, we're not changing. Well, then they show up and all of a sudden, now there's 529. Still 60-foot frontages. Guess what's going to happen? People don't want that. They didn't say they didn't want a development. Maybe nobody wants to see anything. But there's never been a compromise from y'all. Nobody has said a word. This is ridiculous. Okay, they want to build. They spent all this money for that land. I get it. They want to shove as many houses as they can in there because that's the revenue they're going to get out of it. Well, who do you owe your respect to? Those people that put you up here? Those people that elected you all up here? Those are the people you need to listen to as well. They've worked very hard for their homes. They love their homes. And they have come with factual information. They are not standing up here saying, I don't like that blue house. They're saying, I don't like it because I have a water issue, the bedrock. They're giving you the information. Mr. Gorman, you know better than anybody. He can educate all of you. Well, why can't we build something different if they own it and they want to build? I, I've just never heard it from you. And I realize it's a business transaction. I realize how it works. I realize property. But compromise has got to come into play as well. Because it's not satisfying anybody. But a builder who pays you nothing, eventually, yes, the city will get, get revenue. Nobody's saying that the City of Clayton shouldn't expand. But there's a lot of different ways to do it. And I'm not sure that piece of property is the proper one for the development that's been proposed. And we have been saying it for how many weeks? How many months? The zoning committee, I know somebody brought it up and said, oh, they passed it, the builder. Well, the only reason, I'm sitting in the zoning meeting, the only reason they passed it on to y'all is because they didn't want to make a decision because there is a few people on the zoning board that don't understand this. They don't understand the grounds. And they specifically said, well, we'll just pass it on and then they'll have to decide. And that's how y'all got it. Well, that's not right. Y'all were elected by these people. It's, I know you're not making millions, but y'all are paid. And you're paid by tax dollars. You owe them to listen to them. And if I might say one more thing. I will admit, Mr. Lieberman, I've known you for a lot of years, but I don't think this was a time or place to bring up half that stuff. I think it could have been done in a more personal way.
Thank you, ma'am. Buzz Goodwin?
Buzz Goodwin, 418 Beach Grove. Not going to get into rock or sump pumps. I'm going to get into leverage. You're the city. You have the leverage. Tell them what you want them to build. You're the zoning people, pick the zoning board. Tell them what you want. Make a deal. It's not that hard. Ken, thank you for telling these people they're supposed to listen to us at the last meeting. I heard you loud and clear. I hope you all hear us. Nobody doesn't want the town to be better. But there has to be somebody hearing. This is the third or fourth meeting that has pretty well been packed, that people have filled the room. And yet, it seems like this commission isn't listening to what the people that put you in office came here for. Came here for this meeting and put you in your position. I heard some pretty good politicians tonight, future politicians. That gentleman back there, I don't even know his name, running the Rural Committee. Buddy, we need to fill these seats. We're going to push the puck down the street? Well, come on, guys. Let's push the puck down the street. You're going to let them run it for 10 years? They've run it the last, what'd they say, since 1980? Well, it's time for change. Things are changing at the federal level. It needs fixed right here at the local level. There you go, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Gloria von Farnestock, 10831 Putnam. Two questions. Where's it going to end? I asked Ms. Zimmerman, Zerlin, at one point, about a year ago, there's a planning thing that was done in 2018. So when's the next plan coming out? And who actually did that? Was this just given out to a contractor who just said, oh, we've got these places of land. This looks good here. This will be good here? You know, who did that? Was it you? Did you sit down and do that? Or did you hire somebody to do it who really doesn't know our hearts, who don't know our neighbors, who don't mow our yards, who don't eat at our businesses, who don't put kids in the school? our businesses, who don't put kids in the school? You know, maybe that needs to be rewritten now, not later, because I want to know where it ends. You know, I come here and fight, not because Sweet Potato is right next door to me. I'm a little ways out. But I've got a lane that goes between my house and the next one. Who's to say they're not going to build that? You know, we've still got property here that hasn't been finished. Who's holding those people accountable? Who's holding all that accountable? When are we going to have a word on that? When are we going to finish something? You know, how many times? Don't start a new project till you've finished the last one. Why do we keep doing this? You need more money. Well, let's finish something, or let's call it quits. Let's say, this is it. We failed at this one. Are we going to redo it for something else? When is it going to end? My other point, a TIF. Do you all know what a TIF is? I understand that you're going to get a TIF. Who pays for the TIF? I think you need to educate people, people up there watching. You need to know what a TIF is, because when you say, oh, we don't have anything in it, I forget who it was who said it. We do have skin in the game, because that TIF, as I understand, comes out of our budget, comes out of our money. Why are we paying developers to do something? Why are we given money? I know that they're having the same issue on Old Mill over there on Phillipsburg Union. Why are we given money to have a development done that we don't want to have happen? We definitely, you guys are great guys. I've talked with you. I mean, you really are. But you're not giving us what we want. You compromise, you talk to them, because you want to be the gatekeeper. You want to do the right thing. But you need to be talking to us. You need to be listening to us. And guess what? If we go small and we screwed up, we can always go bigger later. Well, all we're asking is to step back. Let's reconsider how much we're doing. Let's take those little bits and pieces. Maybe we want to start with this part, then this part, then this part, and we'll do phases. You know, nothing against the developers, but you got to listen to us. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'm going to go one more time. Is there anyone else that did not speak that would like to speak? Step up. Yeah, step right. You can just, if you just state your name and address for the record.
Tim Philpot, 6644 Garber. Maybe coming from a different perspective, but nothing personal against the builders. The levy passed, is that correct? Do you guys, do we all understand what our levy now matches, what our taxes, what rate it matches now to other suburbs? Oakwood. Put that stick in. I, I don't have a problem with the builders. I have a problem with you, the way we're running the city. And I hate to be rude about it, but there's a 3.5 million dollar, yeah, it went up 3.2 million dollars. This is 2023, the last fiscal that's on the website compared to 2022. Costs went up 3.2 million. General government expense went up $2 million from 2022 to 2023. We're having a tax increase. We can't even control what we're doing now. And we want to develop more? The manifest destiny of Clayton, I guess. I don't understand it. Support the men in blue and the ladies in blue. But I have asked repeatedly to please patrol Garber. It doesn't happen. Please. No, they're not. So if you would go down to the next street, which is Willow Brook, Willow Brook, I guess?
Address the council, please.
Sure. You would see people flying from Westbrook down Garber. There's only a few main roads, Union, Old Salem, Garber, Main. I just want to get Oakwood services if I'm going to pay Oakwood taxes. So again, I don't have a problem with the developers. I have a problem with the way our city's being ran. And with that type of taxes that have went up, from a business owner's standpoint, I can't believe that you increased 2022, 2023, 3.2 million dollars of cost. That's unbelievable. So before you worry about expanding the city, why don't you fix and learn how to manage what you have now? So.
Thank you, sir. One more time, anyone else? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Misty McDowell. My address is 5050 Pebble Brook. I'm in Inglewood, Ohio, but I have a Clayton residence. And I don't know what to say. I'm listening to everyone speak their voice. And it's a good thing to speak your voice, right? I do want to say a couple of things. People can change their mind. I think everyone in this room have changed their mind. I want to go on record and say, I have to trust somebody. I can't doubt everybody. So with saying that, I trust you to do the right thing for my community, and I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Final, absolute, last time. Is there anyone else that didn't get to speak that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. We are going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is old business. Will you please read the first ordinance?
Ordinance O-012502, an ordinance adopting the planning commission's recommendation to approve with specified conditions, the application of SDG Warner Village LLC for a change in zoning from residential, single-unit district, RSD, to plan development district, PDD, and to further approve the preliminary development plan for 183 acres, excuse me, 183.1044 acres of property located near the intersection of Sweet Potato Ridge Road and Main Street, bearing parcel ID number M6003010001 within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Is there any other discussion for council before we take a vote?
I'd ask to be recognized by the chair to provide remarks.
Go ahead, Mr. Hennig.
So my statements this evening, first off, for the record, I just would note that the crowd was not booing me. They were booing Dennis. Second, I'm going to say I'm going to be speaking very calm tonight, because last time Dennis put in an email that I was erupting and speaking hatefully, et cetera. Dennis, to say that I hate anything is also a lie. If you needed a blood transfusion and I had the same type of blood as you, I would give you some of my blood. I don't hate people. And finally, I'd say, Dennis, this is government.
Kenny, we're talking about the ordinance, not about Dennis.
No, this is getting to it. Thank you.
Let's get to the ordinance.
I've asked to speak. Thank you. This is government. We don't have to agree. So I know many of you are confused about how we got to this point, especially after feeling confident the development was voted down last time we met. Unfortunately, as I've said before, sometimes government operates in ways that are not transparent. And when individuals speak out against the lack of transparency, they become targets of personal attacks. I will share more on that shortly. However, I firmly stand by my previous statements, statements residents have overwhelmingly supported. The city manager and some council members do not prioritize the desires of our community. Furthermore, the council members who voted for this development without public notice or input should be held accountable by the voters. Timeline of events. January 16th, council voted against the housing development in a four to three decision. During that meeting, the city manager made an inappropriate comment suggesting that the developer could sue the city. That is not something the city manager, in my opinion, had ever meant, should mention, or had ever mentioned previously with Redwood, et cetera. The statement was reckless and unnecessary, potentially jeopardizing the well-being of Clayton. Before February 4th, the mayor and I learned this last night, law director Martina Dillon had asked the developer or their attorney not to speak to council members and ask for a prohibition until she briefed council. February 4th, council was briefed. We received an email from the law director. We were instructed not to share the contents of that email. However, I'll just say, imagine an email outlining steps for reconsideration. That's what was in the email, including a pre-written script of maybe how reconsideration could happen with how the council members could do it if they wanted. February 6th, councilwoman Tina Kelly motioned for reconsideration of the development. And just as you might expect, she followed the prepared script that I said could have been prepared for council to read. The development was reconsidered and passed by a four to three vote, with Tina Kelly flipping her vote. No discussions occurred about potential concessions or improvements to the plan. No discussions of concessions, and I'll get to that in a minute. There was no evidence that Tina Kelly had negotiated with a developer, or that any modifications had been made to the development that had already been voted down. Everything that was voted on February 6th remained the same as the January meeting. No concessions. No public notice was given to residents. Nothing was listed on the agenda. This was not a transparent process. Instead, it was orchestrated behind closed doors. It's worth noting that the developer never requested a reconsideration to council. There are no emails, public records, or meeting discussions showing that council members collectively considered or requested a reconsideration hearing. Why was potential reconsideration not listed on the agenda by the city manager? In my opinion, leadership did not want the residents to know about this. Let me remind everyone, council employs the city manager. The city manager is not in charge. We are. But we report to you. You are our bosses. So we have to listen to the residents, in my opinion. Coordinated political tax regarding the development. At 5:39 PM on February 12th, former council member and local defense attorney Dennis Lieberman, who represents some of the county's most violent offenders, sent out an email titled Call to Action to approximately 40 people. This email was written with the tone of a courtroom closing argument, trying to get the public, the jury, to believe him, filled with misleading statements and personal attacks against me. He also did not expect many on that email thread to forward the email to me, even though we know so many of the same. You should have just CC'd me on it, Dennis. The email included personal email addresses for council members, city staff, city commission members, at an obvious attempt to avoid a public records request, because usually when we get a public records request, it's for city emails, not personal. Let's not forget Dennis Lieberman's public service history. He was fired from the Montgomery County Board of Elections by John Houston. He was involved in a document leak scandal at the Montgomery County Board of Elections in 2024. Montgomery County Board of Election Member Barb Gorman said the leak was inappropriate.
That's unnecessary.
So, okay, so I'm going back to this. He falsely claimed that non-residents spoke for hours at our meetings, opposing the development. That's not true. He falsely stated that Clayton was at risk of a state takeover if our levy had failed. Martina, is that true? Have we ever discussed a state takeover? A state take, so we were at risk of a state.
A state audit office puts out every year. Our last three years, we've spent more in expenses than we had revenues come in. So we received a red, which is a critical. And so if we keep that, if we keep that up, then yeah, they would go into fiscal watch, fiscal emergency, and the state would take us over. I talked about that during my budget workshop.
So that was not, what he said, though, side of the story. He falsely asserted that Tina Kelly had negotiated concessions with the developer. I asked today what concessions were that only Tina knows about. It was in the email that I sent to everybody. Only Dennis and Tina know about the concessions that she negotiated with the developer. I have asked Tina and Martina, Martina, have we discussed any concession with the developer?
During a council meeting?
Yes.
Not that I recall.
Thank you. Only Martina, or only Tina and Dennis, per his email, know of these concessions. I would love to know about what these concessions are, because maybe I would have considered voting for it, too. Dennis' email was not about facts. It was carefully crafted to design, influence, and lead. He accused me of erupting in thing about transparency. He mocked my belief that residents should have been notified. He claimed I was acting this way because I had something to gain, which the only thing I have to gain from these meetings is heart problems, like you have. I have everything I need.
Come on, Jenny, wrap it up, please.
Beautiful wife, family, et cetera. You've jeopardized my family's safety by the emails that you sent out. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other shorter discussion?
Mine's maybe a little less intense. So, and this is kind of repetitive from the last couple of meetings, but I know there's probably some new people in here. So I'll start off here. Oh, actually, Randy, since you haven't been to the last couple here, if you could take the stand. Things that, you don't have to state your name. Reviewing, I'm sure you've gone over the review of this here. As far as anything that you reviewed, as far as like water and things like that, you know, what's your opinion on here as far as the impact to, you know, to the surrounding area?
I looked at the, I looked at the plan when it came to me from Ellen. The only thing that I was slightly concerned with, obviously, is the traffic on, at Main Street and Sweet Potato. I actually spoke to that. I spoke to the, I believe the developer probably has my statements on that as well. The drainage itself, I have worked with residents of Inglewood over on Rankin, one of them's a back there, Mr. Speltz, for drainage issues that had occurred. And the drainage issues, if you go check with Stefan, it's soil and water was made because of the plowing of the field over and over, built basically a big mud wall, and it was sending it right through these poor people's backyard. It looked like a river back there. And it was on a major rainfall, but pretty much every time they got a lot of water, it would be a river going down through there. Mr. Speltz and I believe family members took, you know, took the initiative to get with, and I'd be happy to give them all to you, but there's 100 emails to, with Sally Rupert, attorneys, and a lot of other people to get, purchase, you know, a strip of land to get that water back where it was supposed to go. Soil and, you know, soil and water at that time told me that that was where the water was supposed to go originally, but because of, you know, obviously, a lot of plowing and stuff in the farm field, it had gone a different direction, basically, through their backyard.
So what, the impact of this development on, you know, the current, on the land that is going on?
Well, again, I'm not going to pretend I'm a drainage engineer, because I am not. Okay? Yeah, approximately about 25 acres, actually, of that back corner actually drank, yeah, drains to that corner right there. And it was, originally was designed to go straight down to the bottom between the old farmhouse and straight out towards 48. That's where the water was supposed to go. And actually, these guys, but by working with the developer, or, excuse me, working with Mr. Locke at the time, was able to get that water to go directly where it needed to go. It went that way years and years ago, because the farmer, I'm sure it's probably a leased farm to begin with, so I think all the years of farming and farming, he didn't own the property. He either leased it or farmed it on the shares, who knows? But he did not, you know, a lot of times those farmers will go in and remove that dirt or put it someplace else, so it doesn't cause those problems. It just was never done. But, you know, I'm 33 years of ODOT, probably 10 or 15, you know, here as well. Typically, a development handles some of those problems. Again, without seeing the actual drainage stuff and talking to the engineers, that's really not my swing house, so.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to get your feeling.
Sure.
Kevin? No, the, you know, question about the TIF came up tonight. You know, can we get an explanation of, you know, what's going, you know, the TIF on this or a potential one?
So what a TIF is, basically, is you outline the area that you're going to have the improvements in. And so what it is, is it's basically the property taxes have to be spent within that area. So we have TIFs in the city now. So when we collect those TIF monies, the one development we had that we had a developer's agreement with, we started paying them back for putting the roads and the curbs, water lines, sewer lines in. So like right now, we got North Clayton, and it's just building up because there's no developer out there. But the monies have to stay within that district and be used for that development in that district. But it's not an additional tax. It's just basically we get all of the county, the school, library, all that. We get all their taxes. But usually, with the TIFs we have, the school gets made whole. We pay the school what they should be getting, so they're made whole. But then we have the rest that have to be used within those districts or in that area to pay back for any infrastructure improvements.
Okay, yeah, so it's just property tax from that area?
Yeah, it's just, it's the same rates you're paying, but they're directed to only be used in that area.
Okay, so it wouldn't be the overall property tax of the city. It would just be from that area?
Correct, within that development.
Okay.
But Mr. Schweitzer, the people who live in that TIF are the ones who pay into the TIF fund, correct?
Yes, their, all their property taxes will be going into the TIF fund that live in that TIF district, yes.
And as you aptly pointed out with the village of North Clayton, you can only improve infrastructure so many times, that eventually that becomes an accumulating fund. If I remember right, there's probably, what, about 900K?
Yeah, it's 850.
If I remember right, there's probably what, about 900K city in the Village of North Clayton?
Right now, 856,000.
The length of the TIF can be a big problem. I know we have like a 30-year TIF.
It's a 30-year, yeah, and like I said, it's been sitting there not being.
My mac and then vol calculation tells me there could be well over a million dollars sitting in that after 30 years. Because like I said, you can only pave roads so many times, change light bulbs so many times.
Yeah. Yeah, the real estate is regular tax. It's the improvements, that's a tax improvement financing, increment financing. Yeah, so like North Clayton is a 30-year development. So, and then in some of the newer ones, we did a, it's a 10-year, so.
Yep. Both chiefs? Both of you?
I said shorter, not longer.
I'll still be maybe under. So for both of you here, same question, you know, have you guys reviewed this here? And, you know, what's the opinion of, you know, the impact of this development, you know, negative or anything? And can, you know, can the fire department, police department, you know, handle that increase?
Okay, so I'll speak for the fire department, obviously, and I spoke at the last council meeting to the same way. So we are in a better position to handle the volume in there now than we were five years ago. And that is because we are collaborative, just not one, one city now. When we look at it now that we, we used to only have two stations, now we have four that run this whole entire area. Actually, the two fire department or two stations that were primarily run to that area are our two slowest firehouses. On top of that, we don't expect large call volumes out of there as well. And I said this the last time. It's, it's hard to say how much call volume will come out of a certain neighborhood. There's a lot of mitigating factors that go into it. Age, is it rental, is it, you know, how many people, the whole nine yards. But if we just go by population, which isn't the most accurate, it's going to give you an overinflated. So this is the worst case scenario. If you just go by population, what's expected to go in there, we will increase our runs by about 35 a year, based on that. And that's just based on developments we have, based on our population, divide our calls by the number of population. How much population is going to be in there? That's what the call volume should be. So that's, that's how we look at it.
Brian, haven't you had your response times cut in half due to collaboration?
Yeah, our response times now, right now, through the collaborative, is right around four minutes. So when you look at the two stations that would respond to there, it's Station 98, which is the second due house to that, which is, which is Inglewood. And then also Union, which is on Martindale. Now, when I talk about the collaborative as we hear, well, that's Inglewood, that's Union. We respond about 500 times in Inglewood a year. And actually, if you look at the balance of the calls and, you know, obviously, when Randolph Township was developed, they set the stations in the right place. It's actually almost even. What we give Inglewood, we get back from Inglewood. So it is a collaborative, a give and take, and it does work very well. And, you know, we talk about, you know, saving money and the budgets and all that. We're up over $3 million in savings over the last five years just for the fire department, so.
Matt, you agree?
The other thing I will add, if anyone has questions, please call us and ask. That's, and I'm not talking about it in.
Afterwards, okay.
Afterwards, everybody has their time to talk, but we would love to have conversations with people so you can get the facts and you can answer your questions. We're not trying to hide anything from the police or the fireside or anything in here. It's, we're an open book. We'll be more than happy to ask questions or answer questions and give you the facts. But to this date, yes, we have had some record requests for call volume. That was just recently, two in the last week. Other than that, we don't give many calls about response time services or anything like that, that we've actually had questions about. Or people saying, can we actually serve the population out there? That question's never been asked to me.
As I'd like to say, I'll stand by what I said last time. Calls are minimal at Hunter's Path. I share with council every month stats. We do anywhere from 250 to 275, 300 traffic stops a month. We write around 2,500 to 2,700 tickets a year. We're everywhere. Our priority calls are minimal, as I said, I share my stats with you. Our main priority calls are down. Our response times are anywhere from three minutes to five minutes, depending on where the call is. And let's remind everybody, we're 18 square miles. So the officers get there fairly quickly on priority calls, and that's what you want. We are a safe city. In fact, I even have Brookfield's police chief that's moved into the city. So I'm going to stand by what I said last time. We're out there. Calls are minimal. And again, like Brian said, we're transparent. If you have a question, if you have a complaint, come see me.
Like, I keep them in order in Hunter's Path, they're my new neighbors, so.
Thank you.
I have one more question for staff and then something I'll address to council. Mr. Zimmerman, so I know the discussion of the schools here has come up multiple times. So I guess the question isn't, it wouldn't be for the schools to say, you know, supporting this or not. But obviously, they have to say, okay, can, can the schools handle this? What's been the response from Northmont Schools on this?
They have told us that they can absorb the students.
Okay.
The superintendent has told me that they can absorb the students.
I mean, yeah, so I mean, I think it was said earlier here of the schools supporting it, which, like I said, not, you know, there's a difference between supporting it and saying we can. So what you're saying is that they're saying that they can handle the increase of population?
Yes, they said they have the capacity to absorb the students.
Last thing I have here, and feel free to, you know, any more discussion from council here. I will propose on this, kind of, you know, going back from the last meeting. You know, everything I believe we did, we did do, you know, in the proper and legal manner. It did take away from the time that, you know, some residents, you know, there was only a few in here to speak. Obviously, correct, and you're all here now. So with that, that's, that's a fact. It's not funny here, and this meeting was announced. Everyone's here now. So for that, I'll recommend, you know, if we want to discuss more here, anything else, you know, tabling this vote, which would be still technically the second vote, you know, to the next meeting. With the condition, running it like this, where visitors' comments are allowed for this, you know, for this topic before we discuss it again and potentially vote. Think it just gives another time for, you know, some people, you know, to do this again. To do some fact finding. I'll, I'm not making the official motion to do that now, and if anyone wants to have further discussions on this. But, but I think that would be a proper thing to do in this situation here, since, you know, that. If I go back to the last meeting, and correct me if, to my understanding, how that would have worked. So the reconsideration passed, and it technically went back to the motion to approve the ordinance, which I made. At that point, I believe, so I could have said, okay, I withdraw my original motion and table this for the next meeting. Would that have been able to be, been done? Okay. So essentially, to allow, this would have been, that would have moved that to this one as the first reading. You know, so if you get what I'm saying, basically, we're just pushing this back to another time here. We're not, we wouldn't be voting today, but it would give more time for if anyone wants to come out and speak, get some more information. I think that would be an appropriate thing to do on this. Basically, we wouldn't vote, tabling it would not, so tonight would be the, technically, the second vote on this. Last meeting was technically the first, first vote, obviously, it was a reconsideration, and it passed. We would table this vote to the next meeting, so we would not vote on this ordinance tonight. We'd table it for the next meeting. It would allow, you know, this to happen again, people to come in, give feedback, ask any questions. You know, transparency has been a big word here, and, you know, so this is just allowing things to be more transparent.
So, no, the letters would not go out again. We do not send out the 300-foot letters for a second reading.
That's really all I, that's all I have on that. I'm, I'm happy to, to make that motion, but open it up to anyone. And I guess to go back here and just to, you know, from the first vote, I know I made the motion to approve. If there's ever a time, and I'm just speaking this personally, if there's a time that people are like, hey, you know, someone makes a motion, like, hey, hold on, I got something to say or something to ask on that. Do it. Just, you know, I didn't feel, I wasn't doing like a quick, you know, move for approval here just to ramrod it in. If, if, if it seemed that way to anyone, I apologize. That wasn't my intention. I obviously had a, you know, was moving to approve it there and was voting that way. But if there's ever a time, I think that'd be appropriate for any of us, if a motion made, but to be like, okay, hey, I've got some questions or I've got something to input here. I think it's, it's fair to do that. That's all I have. Sorry, I was long.
Thank you, sir, that's all right. Any other discussion?
Do you mind letting the developer finish whatever statement he was going to finish when he was up speaking?
Want to come up?
Just a couple of clarifications. The, I think one of the things that I think is different from the previous one that got referendum'd was, I believe, and we were aware of that, that one was zoned agriculture. And they're trying to change it zone to density. We were, our zoning in place and our overlay and our future planned use was all medium density. And that's kind of what we're asking for, and that's what we, that's what we designed, and that's kind of what we did. Also, clarification, my dad was not a developer. She probably just thought I was the dad, and I'm not. But, no, that's really kind of the gist of it. I mean, the bottom line is, we, we think it's a great development. We think it's the right place at the right time, and we're following what we thought Clayton asked us to follow. And it's kind of that simple, really.
And then would you know of any concessions that were discussed with any council members? There were no.
We would never do that.
There were never any much-needed concessions discussed, ever?
No, because, well, the only concessions that were made was when we, when Planning Commission said, you know, we want to make these 60-foot lots.
It just was reference, like I said earlier.
And we made that concession. And I, you know, that's, that's the only concession we ever made. And I think, I think I pride myself in doing this honestly and appropriately and being very professional with what we do. That's why we have all these open houses. That's why we have all this input. That's why we meet with everybody. We don't play games. We, we don't try to do something that can't really be done. And I think that's, you know, that's a little bit of the frustration right now, quite honestly. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Before you step away, one question.
I'll stay here all night. I got nowhere to go.
I don't want to be here all night. The comment was made about the, who would be the builders?
I'm sorry, what?
The comment was made about the builders on this site.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Besides Fisher, who else is going to be?
Yeah, so it's, it's really majority of homes are going to be Fisher homes. DR is going to be a small portion of the overall development. And I think what, what I love about this product, and we're doing it, we're doing it down in Cincinnati, in the area of Batavia. We are, we are providing multiple different housing types. I'm, I'm confident that every product type that we have fits a need in your, in your city. My specific one that I love the most is the parrot patio one. I'm older. I need to be on one floor. And there's not a lot of housing like that. I'm going to be willing to guess that Clayton doesn't have a ton of single-floor living housing, because most, everywhere else in the greater Cincinnati Dayton area does not. We also are creating attainable housing for the young kids. You know, this, this housing crisis is not just a, not just a media thing. This is real. This is, you know, when I think of my children, who are 33, 31, and 28, trying to find something that they can buy, unfortunately don't live anywhere near us, so, but it's a whole nother story. But for them to find something affordable to buy is nearly impossible. You know, the average, the average first-time buyer now, I heard this statistic today, the average first-time home buyer is now 38 years old. I was 20 when I bought my first house. My kids, two of the three have bought a house, but it was a monumental struggle, and they paid way more money than they really should have ever had to pay. But if we have enough housing, the housing can become more affordable. It's that simple. Pure economics.
I had asked the city manager about this before the meetings a while back. You are doing another project somewhere close by, I think it was in Butler Township?
Yes, we're doing a, it's basically an extension of a very old development. It was started in 2006. Yeah. And they did phase one and two, and then it just sat. And now we are just starting the phase four. And we're, we're, actually, we just visited the site today. We're very excited about it. It's going to, it's going to do very well. But they're also in desperate need of, of housing as well.
But I'm just saying, you are familiar then, basically, with this area in terms of what the needs are.
I'm sorry, what?
This basically means you're also aware of what's needed in this area, not just doing all your work down in the Cincinnati area.
Yeah, no, well, and we rely heavily on our builders for that. I mean, these guys are in this market every day. You know, DR and Fisher are, you know, they're, they're kind of driving us what we need, you know, telling us what they need. And then we go back and study what they're studying to kind of create, you know, the right product at the right place. You know, in, in my mind, you know, I look at this project as a project that is going, in my mind, maybe it's a little selfish of me, but in my mind, this is going to help keep the rural part of Clayton rural. Where this, I don't, in my mind, this isn't really the rural part of Clayton. And obviously, your zoning, your zoning you guys put in place there over many, many, many years said the same thing. And that's kind of what we're following. And if you let me off my soapbox, I'll get off right now.
I was going to say, as far as doing developments, since this is your forte, basically, you build something or project building, something moving into the future is 20 years down the line, per se. Projecting what might, could be needed, because developments just don't happen overnight. So you basically have to plan.
No, I, yeah, I think what you're saying is, we, we do make a very long-term plan. Is that what you're asking me?
I mean, developers, builders, the city, all have to make long-term plans to get things in place. So when these things come available, they start moving, they're just not sitting on a shelf waiting.
Right, I mean, you got, you got to have, yeah, you get, if you don't, if you're not prepared for it, it's not going to happen. Just like I know some people talk about here, about how they don't, you know, they, what if they go out here, where I'm out here in the country, and try to develop something? Well, chances are, there's probably not sewer there. And if there's not sewer there, then you're, you're safe. You're not going to have high-density development. But I mean, and I do, I do feel that if, if a city's not growing, it's shrinking. I mean, and I think, again, I think this is the right project at the right, at the right location. And I would really like to not table this.
And the one, and the one thing that came up earlier in terms of this whole thing, as a developer, you have the set obligation to put all the infrastructure into before this could even happen. You have to put the stormwater drainage, you have to put, you're doing the traffic study, you're looking at traffic flow. All these things are going to be totally part of this project if it goes, if it goes forward.
Absolutely, and we actually do those proactively. A lot of guys will not do, you know, I would say, majority of developers would not have done a traffic study already. We've already done a preliminary traffic study. We don't want to have surprises. It's too big of a, too big of a project, it's too big of a commitment to not to have any surprises. So we, we get all of our ducks in a row, and I think I was going to get to that before I ran out of time last time. But we do have a traffic study that we know we're going to have to act on to kind of make this, this traffic through Sweet Potato Ridge work properly. And, you know, and the reality is, your planning people, your county, everyone's going to also, we're going to work together to do that. So even if we weren't the best actors, we, it would still probably get done, not, not as well as we're going to get it done, but it would get done. So, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to, and it's too much of a, too much of a financial commitment for us. it's too much of a, too much of a financial commitment for us to, to kind of go about it haphazardly. You know, we, we, we need this to be more successful than Clayton needs it to be more successful. And that's, because my wife would kill me. So.
Can I ask about rentals? How many rental units are you proposing in this particular plan?
I believe we have it for 100.
Okay, so the rentals are doubles and not apartments?
Oh, no, these are single-family.
Okay, that just needed to be clarified because?
Yeah, yeah, single-family, two-car garage. Yeah, this is not, and this is all owned by very large private equity firms. And this is a, you know, this is an asset class that if you look around the country, this is a really big, you know, the young generation, and I use my kids all the time in this case, they, a lot of them don't want to own a home, but they also want to have a yard. They may not want a kid, but they want a dog. So they want a yard, they want a place for the car. So it is, there's a, there's a serious need. And also, I think in this particular region, it's also important, because I think you will have a bunch of military who are a little bit more transient and maybe don't want to put down solid, solid roots, because they're going to get stationed somewhere else, you know, three years from now. So I think it's a...
How much would the house is going to run for?
They can, they'll vary on the different floor planes, whether the three-bedroom or four-bedroom. They could be anywhere from $2,300 to $3,000 a month.
Yeah. Okay, well, let me, I'll answer that question for him. And the other thing, these are three- and four-bedroom houses. This isn't garden-style apartments. So this is, you know, $23 to $3,000 a month in rent. Two-car garage, very nice. I mean, it's, and it's, and it's, you'll see this everywhere across the country, and it's growing on a rapid pace.
And they are single homes, correct?
Yes. Fee simple, on their own lot.
How many different models are going to be built? Different styles?
Different models, as far, well, as far as overall project, we're going to have, in, in, DR Homes is going to have their, their rental homes. And they're going to have, in that rental home, there's got three, four bedrooms, probably multiple, multiple different styles, but then, and within those styles have multiple different elevations to give differentiation. Fisher is going to be building their designer, which is their 450 to 600,000. Their Maple Street, which is going to be in the low threes. And then the parrot patio, which is the attached product, fully maintained yards, fully maintained driveways, snow removal. And, and those will be, you know, in the low threes.
What levels are the low threes to what?
Probably, I mean, you never know where someone's going to take it, but I would say probably, yeah, six, 650. And, you know, so, and in our, and when I'm looking at projects, and I use, I keep on using the same project over and over again. We're doing one in Batavia that's been very successful for the community. You could certainly reach out to the Village of Batavia. They're very excited about it, because it's really given so many different opportunities for different types of home buyers and users. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone?
Well, Mike, I want to, I want to pipe in on the reference to our Right Pat employees. I know you want to say if you're a resident of Clayton and work at Right Pat, I'm right there with you. I appreciate you choosing our community. But I can tell you, knowing a lot of folks out there and making the 30-minute commute one way every day, that I think it's a real stretch to say folks that come to Right Pat are looking here. Now, I will say this, well, how did I end up here? Well, I didn't know I was going to meet the love of my life, and she lives in North Clayton. I lived in Riverside at the time. It's an affitt student. I put 22,000 miles in my car, going back and forth between here and there. But it's been worth it. And we certainly came back here. And the draw we came back for was family. We have family here. But I also think the other draw is, it really is the rural feel of our city. And I just want to say, I think we have to be very careful as we go forward to not lose that to, to how we go forward in development. We need to be very smart about that so we can preserve that, because that is a unique draw that we have in our area. So I just want to put that to rest. Again, you know, if, if you talk to some folks at Right Pat, I think, hey, once you come out to Clayton, they're probably going to give you a second look, particularly those in uniform that are here just, just here from, from two to four years. So that's my take on it. Just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right, the ordinance has been read. Is there any action? Is there, is there any motions?
I will move to table the vote to the next meeting with the condition, correct me if I can't do this here, the condition that visitors' comments on this ordinance be allowed before the ordinance is read.
Second.
Okay, everyone heard that? There's a, yeah, there, yeah, there's a motion by Mr. Bachman to table this ordinance, and second by Ms. Kelly. Will you read, have a roll call, please?
Farmer?
No.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
No.
Kelly?
No.
That was a no? I'm sorry, yes?
Excuse me.
Yes. Bachman?
Yes to table it.
Yes.
And Stevens?
No. Okay, motion passed, so we're going to table it until next, the next meeting.
So then, Martina, can you explain how this now happens? It's been tabled. Thank you for that. Obviously, we can have additional residents speak if they would like. I think we've heard the same things over and over again. We will have to make a motion to untable it. And then will it be on the agenda in advance, or do, okay, so you're saying yes, but before, when we've tabled things, it's not been on the next agenda?
I think they have been. I believe so. If it's been tabled to a specific meeting, it's been on the agenda.
Yeah, I didn't table this indefinitely there. I think at times...
He tabled it, he tabled it to the next meeting, so it'll be on the agenda.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you.
Okay, on to new business. Looks like we have four resolutions. Will you read the first, please?
Martina, since Mr. Walker's not doing the board, how do we handle that one?
From my understanding, is Mr. Walker contacted the city and indicated he did not want to be reappointed. So what I would suggest is you read the title of the resolution, and then council can discuss next steps, i.e. tabling or some other type of action, reappointment of somebody else, or appointment of somebody else, if there is another person who's willing to be appointed.
I move to table it.
She has to.
Resolution R 022517, a motion, excuse me, a resolution to reappoint Tom Walker as a member of the local Board of Tax Review.
I move to table this, since the individual no longer wishes to serve.
I'll second that.
Motion to table the resolution, excuse me, by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Farmer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that resolution is tabled. Will you read the second, please?
Resolution R 022518, a resolution to reappoint Christine Bachman as a member of the local Board of Tax Review.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion to reappoint Christine Bachman has been made by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. And can we have a roll call on that, please?
Yes. Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Abstain.
And Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
And will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R, excuse me, R 022519, a resolution extending up to and including March 3, 2026, the previously approved 180-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning, occupancy, conditional use, and/or billing permit approvals for residential care facilities and congregate residential facilities within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
I'll move for approval.
I got, I got some just questions on this.
Obviously, there was a lot of details on, you know, on this here. So I'm going to kind of just use an example, but I, and I know the basis around this is the fact that, you know, of just these coming into the normal residential areas. So, say a hypothetical, my neighborhood, a lot of bi-level, you know, three-bedroom, two-bath there, basic driveway. So for somewhere, like if one of those was to become one of these facilities here, and I know there's been discussion in the past with, like, some other kinds of homes like that. I mean, what's the requirements around that? Because you couldn't, I mean, obviously, you couldn't just jam, like, you know, 10 kids in there for this purpose.
Correct. So we do have requirements in our zoning code. However, most of that is governed by jobs and family services. It's usually triggered, the way we usually find out, it's triggered by an inspection by the fire department, because they are required to have an inspection from the fire department. There's a requirement in our code, and I think in the state's code for the number of rooms, that the people who are living there have to have the number of parking spaces, the amount of green space outside. And that's what's currently in our code right now. We did receive the city of Dayton, the amendments that they're proposing for their code. I'm going to ask Ellen to review those, compare them to our code, and we can bring that back to council.
Okay. Sorry, I just spaced out on what I was going to ask again. Okay, yeah, because obviously, some, you know, this is dealing, obviously, you know, adoption is a big thing, you know, orphan kids in this country, so there's obviously a need for it here. Is there, now remember, is there anything, I know this is a lot based around, like, the state is working on legislation. Do we have any kind of an idea of, like, where they're at, what they're working on as far as that?
I do not. No.
Okay. That is all I have. I know that at today's meeting in Harrison Township, they've actually, I asked for a six-month moratorium. Today, the Harrison Township trustees voted to approve a 12-month moratorium on group homes and expansions pending the state legislation. So I only asked for six months, similar to what some other municipalities are doing. So I still second the motion that Mr. Gorman made. And this could, I guess I have one more. So let's say tomorrow, the state passes some legislation on this. It's something that would be, you know, fitting. We could take off this, this moratorium at any time, in that time. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to double-check that. Now, that's all I have. Sorry.
Thank you. The resolution's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. And will you read the fourth resolution, please?
Resolution R 022520, a resolution amending Council Rule 4.7 pertaining to motions to reconsider.
I would like to table this for an opportunity for us actually to discuss this as a group versus doing this on email that I don't think would be fair to the public. So therefore, I would like to table this so we can have the discussion at the next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to table the fourth resolution for further discussion, excuse me, by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Farmer?
No.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do want to say, kind of echo what Mr. Lieberman said. I do appreciate the initiative. I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's got some groundwork to it. I also would like to discuss it a little bit further, too, and just vet it out. But I want to say, thanks.
Yeah, I'm looking for that. Would like some exchange. There's pluses and minuses to doing it this way. And I actually have some rebuttals to what was offered earlier that I obviously don't get to share now.
Yeah, I did not feel comfortable doing this on an email. So it's, that's also a reason why I didn't respond to anything.
There's this invention called a phone, Greg.
I just, no, no, because not all of us would have read the email. And I don't think we've been right for five or six of us to have read it and possibly done something in one person, not.
I thought we tabled it till the next meeting, so we could discuss it then. Okay.
Thanks. Thank you for that. Okay, and the next item is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few items for you this evening. The Meadowbrook at Clayton, the financial report showing the year end 2024 was attached to your city manager's report. Mr. Henning had requested the cost of a flashing speed sign along Hoak Road to the entrance to the Klebs. It'll cost the city about $5,630 to have that built, and then another 200, 2,500, Randy, for the engineering for placement and possibility of school zone designation for that space. The fire department vehicle, it's been a long time coming. We ordered it in 2023, and we are, did we receive it on the 17th, Brian?
Yes.
We did. It is finally in service, so it took that long to receive it. We also received a police cruiser that we ordered in March of 2024. It went into service last week or mid-February. And then the second vehicle, we will have a request to purchase at the next meeting. Since Brian is here, Chief Garver earned the Ohio Fire Chief credentials from the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association. Chief has demonstrated through his education experience, community leadership, and fire service management skills, that he possesses the required skills, knowledge, and abilities required for the fire service leader in the state of Ohio. And we're all very proud of Brian. Mr. Henning also requested the capital projects for 2025. Those are included in your council packet, the slide from the budget presentation. He also requested the roadway slated for work in 2025. And those are also included, but just I'll read through them. So there will be cracked ceiling on Seville and Savina area, striping at various locations in the city. Paving will take place on Clinton from Crestway to Salem Street, and then on Haber from National to Sweet Potato. And then paving with curb work will be Hilltop, Summersweet, Mount Royal, Fallgold, Sterling Oaks, Sterling Woods, and Sterling Maple, basically the streets that were canceled in 2024. The Hoak Road widening project, we are working with O.R. Colan Associates, which is the company that council agreed to contract with in June of 2024, to appraise the right-of-way that we would need to acquire for the project. We are getting those numbers. And once we have those, we will bring them to council for approval, so we can begin negotiations with those property owners. Just as an FYI, tax help is scheduled here at the city building. Below are the, the dates are Thursday, March 6, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Tuesday, March 25, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then again, Thursday, April 10, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You can call Eric Hine at 216-857-3174, or Michelle Jordan at 216-857-7382, to schedule an appointment for tax help. Residents can also submit their taxpayer assistance forms and the necessary documents in the drop box right outside the door, and someone from CCA will pick them up and then return them to you. Just as an FYI, the Village of North Clayton, the Windsor's Company is the owner of the property in the Village of North Clayton, has reached out to staff to discuss development of their development plans. Nothing has been officially submitted to the city yet. We did have a meeting yesterday with them and discussed, at high level, what they were looking at doing, and their plan is to hopefully have something submitted to staff for a basic review, and then submit for planning commission later in the year. Hunter's Path Phase One and Two have a total of 125 lots. They anticipate having all the lots sold by summer. Arbor Homes is the builder, and they have informed us that 105 homes in the development has sold. One is a market home, one is a model home lot. Five lots are on hold, and there are 13 lots currently available. Hunter's Path has also proposed an extension. DDC management has submitted for staff review their plans for an expansion of Hunter's Path. The plans submitted to staff are an extension to the west. The overall acreage for the site is 37.6 acres, with a proposed lot count of 97 lots. That meets the RSD requirements. The land is zoned RSD single-family currently, and the developer is not requesting any zone change. The developer, if the developer responds to staff comments and submits an application or required fees by March 3, the item will be on the March 24, 2025 Planning Commission agenda. And the earliest it will come before council will be the April 17, 2025 meeting. Grand Villas of Clayton, which is the apartment complex that is on Hoak Road, the staff at Grand Villas of Clayton informed the, informed Clayton staff that the occupancy rate there is 96.23% as of Friday, February 7. Just as a reminder, the MVR PC annual dinner is April 24, 2025. It'll be at the Marriott at the University of Dayton. If you are interested, let me know, and I can RSVP for the group. A couple of Clayton community events, just as a reminder, Sweet Clayton Clean is a little ways out, but it is Saturday, May 17, 2025, 8:00 a.m. to noon, at 200 Wallery Lane, Fire Station 83. And the dumpsters do fill up fast, so if you're going to bring stuff, bring it early. Just as a FYI, the patrol... as a FYI, the Patrol Officer Wage Reopener, the Fact Finder had to cancel our January 22, 2025 Wage Reopener. He was ill. The Fact Finder met with the parties on the afternoon of February 10. Before the Fact Finder, he wanted to attempt to mediate the situation. The city put forth proposals that were ultimately rejected by the union. The city did present the Fact Finder, the documentation, and actual fact-finding hearing is on March 17, 2025. And I think that is all I have. Oh, well, the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we do have an open seat on the Board of Appeals. Seat is open until 11:14, 2029, or needs to be filled. Applicants apply for that position. We did not include it on this agenda because of the five applicants. We assume, or I assumed that council would want to have discussion before selecting some. There is a resolution. We'd like to add that to the agenda and discuss that this evening. If not, wait until the sixth and council or staff can bring that back. And just as an FYI, Clerk Seem did reach out to, or the five applicants, and they did indicate if they were not selected for the BZA, they would be interested in sitting on the Board of Tax Review. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Amanda, quick question. The gentleman vacaying the BZA, has he already vacated that?
He has.
So their next meeting on March 4, they'll be operating a person short?
They will.
Okay.
Anything else for the city manager? Okay, thank you. So we'll go to council and mayor's comments, and we'll start with Mr. Farmer.
Evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight. I called it right for once. I said last meeting, we'd have a full house. What a surprise. I do thank you for coming out, expressing your concerns. You know, in my professional life, I've done analysis, weighing risks, prioritizing. And I'll say this is one of the more challenging jobs I've had because I'm having to consider the interests of the residents, and that's who I answer to. And I have to balance your interests against the interests of property holders and those trade-offs. So that's what we're all doing up here. It's a tough job. I, Earl, if I'm available March 15, I'll be out there picking up sticks with you. So like, I can't get that enough at my own place, but you know. But, you know, we've got some great parks, and we have to take care of them. And the more we can do just on our own with our own volunteer labor, that, that's less against the bill of the city. So I'll look forward to seeing you all next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
First off, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who came, even if you had a different opinion of myself. Thank you for sharing it. Luckily, here in America, we can do that and agree to disagree. So thank, I want to thank everybody for being here. If you want to come back at the next meeting, that would be wonderful. And I would like to end with the Northmont Education Foundation's auction is March 7 at Meadowbrook. Every year, they raise funds for graduating seniors from Northmont to the tune of over $30,000 averaging or more than that. So if you're able to go to the Education Foundation Auction on March 7 at Meadowbrook here in Clayton, the foundation, and most importantly, students applying for scholarships who need them, would appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming also. And I'd also like to thank Bellisarella for having their ground opening today, or groundbreaking today and had most of the council up there. And I wish them luck and hope they do very well up there for themselves and for the city of Clayton. I'd also like to remind everybody, Earl spoke earlier today about the line dancing at Meadowbrook at Clayton tomorrow night at 7 o'clock.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merkel?
Also want to say congratulations to Bellisarella and their groundbreaking today. Looking forward to that becoming into fruition after a long delay. And hopefully, it starts something else happening in North Clayton and making it a viable function area. And I'm just going to end it tonight. We've had, we've been here long enough.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
I'd like to congratulate Bellisarella, too, for their groundbreaking. They're going to be a huge asset to our community, a great restaurant. They were a food truck business for a long time. Now they're going to have a brick and mortar. They already have expansion with patio. I think it's just going to be a great restaurant. And since we're tabling till the next meeting, I will explain my situation and why I voted the way I voted next time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bachmann?
Evening, everyone. Yeah, I won't add much. I'll echo the sentiments to Bellisarella coming in. That's, you know, really big for, I mean, they're a small local company. I mean, literally Clayton residents here. So it's nice to see a place like that. Some of the initial brick and mortar plans we heard, I got, I got the most excited when they said something about a wall of beer, which is, I mean, there's no really better walls than that. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I've actually just got a few things I'd like to address. I'm glad we, I'm glad everyone stayed because I think it's important. There was a lot of things that were said on social media over the past couple weeks. And I follow the social media. I try not to comment on too much other than my own personal issues. So I, quite frankly, I didn't look at a lot of the negative stuff that was out there. I'm blocked from some sites and other things like that, which is, that's fine. But I do want to say that, you know, I try to keep my worlds separate. I'm involved in some, you know, a bunch of stuff. And I do what I can to try to keep, you know, my mayor's stuff separate from my real estate stuff, for example. For example, I'm a Realtor. You know, I work at Caterpillar. So, you know, I try to keep all my, my different worlds separate. But I have to address a couple things that were just not true, that were said about me and also about my wife. First of all, I know most of you don't know her. She's not politically oriented. You know, when I go home tonight, she'll say, how'd it go? That's basically about her interest level. And I mean, she, you know, she's just not interested in that. And I'm fine with that. But so I'm just going to kind of read off a couple of things here. And I'm, I'm saying this as straightforward as I can because, well, let me just read through them. So she did make a comment on one, one post. In her comment, she showed it to me, and I'm kind of paraphrasing because I wrote this, just wrote some notes. A lot of untruths here. She wrote that statement. Well, somehow, that got twisted into she reads all the mayor's emails. And I mean, it's just bizarre how the social media stuff just took on a life of its own. And, and some of it, I get it, people don't like the decision. I'm 100% comfortable with that. Anybody who has paid attention knows I'm all about development. And I'm pushing for that for the same reasons that we've heard from some of these folks tonight. I think our city needs it. But how it got to that, and I'm just here to say it upfront, she's never read any of my Gmail's, which is my personal email, and she's never read any email from the city. All right? And I'm, I'm just saying that upfront. Now, if someone says that I'm not telling the truth, then I'm, I'm going to expect that to be proven out. I'm not going to let these things fly by that are not true. Some other things that, and like I said, you got to watch social media because it becomes your news source. And it's just, it's just ridiculous, some of it. One of the things was, you know, that we make money off of, of real estate. That's why I like development. Well, I can't tell you how far from the truth that is. In fact, my real estate business is much less than it could be because I'm the mayor. I've never had one single person, I've been a Realtor for 13 years, I've never had a single person say, hey, call that, call the mayor, he's a Realtor. No one says that. As a matter of fact, people say, unfortunately, they say, I'm going to call someone else because he's a Realtor. It's, it's not an asset to be a mayor. And it's not in this realm. And it's not an asset to be a city council member or a city manager. Okay? People, you know, people don't say, oh, I'm going to call the city manager and ask or something. They'd rather go on social media, perpetuate some thing out there that their neighbor told them, and think that that's the truth. It's just not the way it is. I've never had any contact with any developer or any builder. Okay? I didn't even get his name right. You know, come on. That's, that's, he's never contacted me. No one, no developer has ever contacted me and said, hey, you know, you're a Realtor, you're the mayor, how can we get this thing done? They don't do that, and I don't accept the calls. 95% of our real estate business, you know, we sell about 12 homes a year. We're low production. We're not big wheels in the real estate. 95% of our work over those 13 years has come from our family, our friends, and our coworkers at Cox Media. Both Diane and I work there, and we have a large network of friends there. No development, developer has ever approached me about real estate. It was also said on there that, you know, that they wanted to see apparently emails from Diane about commercial real estate. Well, we don't sell commercial real estate. I've sold two, two or three commercial buildings in 12 years that for my friend, who's business owner. We're, we're 100% residential. That's all we sell. Just like I said, it took on a whole life of its own. About, let's see, about accepting money from people for different, you know, different things, for different favors or votes or things like that. I've never accepted one penny from anyone. I've run three political campaigns. I ran for, for the city council. I ran for mayor. And I ran for the reelection for mayor. That's all I've run. 100%, 100% came out of my personal bank account. Zero came from anyone else. If he, if, if this developer came over here and asked, you know, and just said, hey, I can, you know, we can slip you money, I would say no. Because from the very beginning, I told, I promised, that was my promise to myself, I'm not going to be beholden to him or anyone else. You know, when I, in the middle campaign, when I ran for mayor, it cost me 10 grand. I mean, yeah, I'm not a rich person, folks. It took a lot of, you know, it took a lot of out of our savings account, but it was a 100% ours, 0% anyone else's. That's actually one of the reasons I would never run for a higher office because it's, it's difficult, unless you're a millionaire, it's difficult to go out and spend $5 or $10 million on a campaign. I could never do that, and I will not accept money from people to run for office. I don't care if it's a political party, developer, you know, rich friend, you know, dead uncle, whatever. I'm not accepting it. So I'm going to switch gears. I'm going to go through this pretty quick. But I want to say something else that, again, it was, it took on a life of its own. I have full confidence in our planning commission, in our staff, and in our city manager. I'm telling you, when we hired Amanda, how, how long has it been? Four or five, five years? We hit a home run, folks. You may not agree with the things that she does. You know, it's just like at, at your work, you know, you think, well, God, that general manager, you know, he doesn't know what he's doing. Well, they do know what they're doing, or they wouldn't be in that position. And we have excelled under Amanda's leadership. And I'll go to my grave saying that. If there's something that she's done that is illegal, that's against the Ohio Revised Code, or our council rules, or Roberts Rules, or sneaky, or colluded, all those things, then bring it, you got to bring it up. You cannot go on social media and just say, she's a bum, because she's not. And you know what? She's got a family. She's young. She's in the middle of her career. And you're, it's unfair and improper to do that. So please do not, you don't, you don't like her and her decision? That's fine. But you can't chastise someone on social media. I mean, what, we're not in seventh grade. You got to, you got to look back and say, what, you know, what are we actually, who's believing this stuff? Who's perpetuating? Because people pile on. You know, we're all giving kudos to Bellisarella, which I'm super proud, super happy of them coming. You know, when it was posted on social media, you know, probably about 80% of the people are all happy and proud, too. But 20% are pissed because we got a pizza place coming in. And I'm thinking, who does that? You know, these people spend a couple million dollars building a business that's going to be a, it's going to be a hit number day one. And we're, we're saying, well, yeah, we don't want that. We already got, you know, we already got two dominoes. Well, this is different, and it's better. And how we, how we get to this is just beyond me. So here's, here's what I want to, here's what I, what I want to say to finish this up. There's been a lot of public records requests made by people, by different people. Kenny and Martina and I had a meeting on a few of them last night. And I want to, I want to put some kind of a, whatever you want to call it, deadline or whatever. I'd like to know what the results of the, of those, all those public records requests are. If there is, I'm talking overview here, but if there was collusion, if we've done something wrong, if we've done something improper, then hey, it's, it is up to us to own up to it. But if it's not, I'm asking the people that perpetuated it to please stop. Because it's, it's making us all look really bad, and it's, it's improper and it's unjust. It's just not where, where we should be as a city. Just like Kenny just said, we can agree to disagree, folks. It doesn't mean you're stupid. It doesn't mean you're, you know, I mean, that'd be like me going out and saying, picking one of you folks out of here and start, you know, just go on social media and say, hey, this guy stole a bunch of money. Guess what? People pile on that stuff. Especially when you're a public figure. And we don't, we don't want that. I'm, you know, I'm going to say just one more thing, then I'm going to cut it off. So again, if, if we find those things that were improper, illegal, those things, then I think it is up to us to take responsibility. And I'm, as the mayor, and I'm going to speak for the rest of our council and for our staff, that we will get to the bottom of that. If it's not, if we come back and, if all, after hours of work, that's, that the, our attorneys put in, and that our rest of our staff has put in, collecting these volumes of public records, they spend a lot of time doing this, I think we need to discuss as a group, what, what do we do? Do we just say, hey, there was nothing wrong? You know, we couldn't find, we spent all this money and upset a lot of people, upset a lot of residents, some justly, some unjustly. So what do we do now? And I think on, you know, if I'm going to look at Martina, she said, you know, it's going to probably take her about maybe two, two weeks to comb through all her stuff. So I'm going to give her that time. You know, if anyone else is showing someone something, you have outside advice, show it. And I'm telling you to either put up or shut up, basically. But, but if it's, if it's shut up, and you know, and don't, you don't bring some kind of evidence or reason for this, then I'm going to expect a public response from the people involved. And I've actually looked into some other issues further. And I promise you, if there's an ethics case, I'm going to pursue it. And if it's, and if it's a legal case, I will pursue it. If it, if it's against the, the Ohio Revised Code, and, and of course, you know, I'll work with our, the resources that we have to make this determination. I'm not a lawyer, but I'm not going to stand for people saying untruths wildly on social media. Listen, ma'am, I, hey, ma'am, the, the, this is not the, the point of public comment. So I appreciate you. But okay, that's all I've got to say.
I'll move for adjournment.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?